All rise. For the President of the District.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for prayer.
Heavenly Father, I thank you for all that are gathered this evening here. I thank you for our township. I thank you for all those that serve it, from first responders to those that work in keeping everything clean and safe and passable in our roads. Heavenly Father, I ask you to watch over our township and let us continue to be the light on the hill and give us all the strength and wisdom to make it so as the community that we are. In your heavenly name I pray. Amen.
Thank you. Executive Session, June 19th. It was after our meeting on that date. We had Executive Session about Public Works Employees and no decisions were made. This evening's meeting is being recorded for rebroadcast. And public comment, five minutes per person, limited to agenda items only. Please come forward, state your name for the record. Okay, seeing none, we will move forward. June 19th meeting minutes. Is there any changes there, gentlemen?
I do not have any myself. I know you have.
Okay, and I have none either. So, anything from you, Lorenzo?
No.
Okay, by the way, Lorenzo is on the phone. He is not able to make it tonight, so he will be playing music. So, okay. I make a motion to approve the June 19th, 2025 meeting minutes. That's presented.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So moved. Okay, we have the CDBG 2024 Design Consultant Proposal on the agenda tonight. Rich, do you have any background on that for the...
Yes, this is for a community development block grant application. We need to, we have an idea of what we want in the study point of arc. And this would be the engineering needed in professional design and survey and stuff to make a proposal to put in the grant application. And these costs, if we're successful, eventually we'll find a pay for it. So, total cost of engineering workers, thirteen thousand six hundred dollars with YSM Landscape Architects.
Okay. Does anyone know that, Dan? You go up. Okay. Are you all right there, Lorenzo?
Yep.
Okay. You want to make that motion, too?
I make a motion to authorize Jeff Mitchell, Vice Chairman for the Board Supervisors, to sign an agreement with YSM Landscape Architects for the design, bidding services, grant administration, construction administration, and construction observation of the Rehymstown Skate Park Project, which was awarded funding from the 2024 CDBG, funding from the Lancaster County Redevelopment Authority.
And I'll second that motion. Motion is second. All in favor, say aye.
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 So moved. Next on the agenda, East Kukaliko Associates Pendup Maintenance Agreement. Rich, do you have a little background there?
Bert, are you working on that more or...?
Yes, I had reviewed both of them, their standard agreements that are required for projects such as this. It's been that form, our review of the standard, and it's, I have no concern with it at all. The other questions about it, I think that's the question.
No, I'm how I saw it too, but I will be recusing myself from this vote in the past. I've had a business relationship with East Kukaliko Associates. I farmed their land. That is not happening this year, but I am recusing myself from the vote just because of that reason. All right?
I'll make a motion to authorize Daniel Burton, Secretary for the Board Supervisor, to sign to signify the township's approval of the maintenance agreement between East Kukaliko Associates and Pendup regarding the HLP permit from the village at East Kukaliko.
I'll second that.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 And I am recusing, so that is a two vote, zero vote.
All right, Lorenzo.
Thank you, Lorenzo.
Thank you, Lorenzo.
Yep.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. Thank you. It was a pleasure.
Okay, we have the UGI Oak Lane Road. Rich, do you have some background on that?
Yes, I do. So, earlier in the month, UGI was mistakenly opened, one of our new roads. We have very restrictive coordinates. Basically, for pivot staff. They were apprised of that situation when they first did one call. They came up with a great plan to come in off the state road instead of coming in off our road, and they had all the permits needed to do that, but somehow the old work order kicked out of their system and accrued response and da-da-da. They're very apologetic for that. I asked them for their thoughts on what, how they would like to rectify that. If I could clarify, you folks, it is the first home on Oak Lane off of West Church or East Church Street?
West.
West Church. So what they've proposed is to mill curvy curve at West Church and go ten foot past the halls, the excavations they have in the road, and then repave the floor specification.
So from the scene on the state road, twenty feet past their...
Ten feet, ten foot past.
Ten foot past there. For the curve. So they're looking for approval of that.
Yeah, that's different.
So we're only talking about one scene then?
And if we have our ordinance recall for the entire area, it has been new paved. We still get a scene either end or start.
Okay. Okay. So, knowing that, you've had close conversations with them, obviously they're very sorry for what you did, but if we're to make a motion to approve them for their work order, what will you make a motion for?
To approve their remedial plan.
I'll make a motion to approve the remedial plan of UGI regarding the Oak Lane Road repairs they need to make due to their faulty, or their incorrect opening of the road. And I'll second that motion.
You have a motion in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So moved. Next on the agenda, CDL agreement. Once again, Rich, you want to give some background on that?
Sorry. Sorry, you're doing a lot right now.
So it's shorthand and everything else?
Yeah, we'd like to get our newest Public Works employee trained for a commercial driver's license. I modeled an agreement after how we refused workout for their training program with our employees, as I think that would be a good model going forward if we invest in a fairly expensive training program of any type. The training program is about four thousand five hundred dollars. We use their vehicles to be able to obtain his Class A air brake lessons and his picture, so we get all the certifications that we could perceive him using, which we couldn't do on our own if we tried to do it in-house. So what the agreement basically spells out on model of the last officer we brought on would be if he leaves service on his own choice in one year, he reimburses the total cost of tuition for the program. After two years, he reimburses sixty-six percent. And if he left in three years of getting his license, he reimburses thirty-three percent of all of that. So, you understand, he wants to work for you, doesn't see this as an issue. Long for there here and moving like a mistake, so I think it works all the way around.
Good. And having a CDL would allow him to use all of our trucks at that point, which at this point, he can't.
Correct.
Yeah. And it, with us assisting in that, it allows him to be here for quite a few years, and that's what we're asking for from him, that commitment, so I'm okay with that idea.
And Rich, I sent it to you and I reviewed it over, and it's accepted.
Okay.
With one minor change that I made for him, and it's good.
Yep, thank you.
But that's in the form you have already addressed.
Okay, so that's, you don't need a motion there, that's just some direction on that? Okay.
Well, as I'm...
Yes. I always say, if you have a question about it, just make a motion.
Yes.
And you have another.
I'll make a motion to accept the East Kukaliko Associates Pendup Maintenance Agreement as presented by Mr. ...
No, no.
Yeah, that's the one.
No, you already did that.
Oh, excuse me.
What this is, is to approve the training agreement for the CDL, reimburse it for CDL.
East Kukaliko Training Agreement. Thank you. For CDL purposes. My apologies. All right, you got a motion, I'll second that.
I think you should make a motion.
Motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So moved. Okay, let's move on to reaffirmation of Resolution 2024-20 Sweetwater, idea of land development of 2024-09.
Yes, we had previously approved that. There's a sixty day clock to get that recorded at the signed date, and they exceeded that their existing truth in place, so we just want to re-approve the prior motion.
We're running out of time.
Yeah.
Yes, okay. I'll make a motion to reaffirm the approval of Resolution 2024-20, passed on July 18th of 2024, to grant land development approval for Sweetwater propane, effective this date of July 17th of 2025.
Second.
You have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So moved.
That was easy, you could read that.
There. Okay. Interfund transfer list of bills and payroll. General fund bank account list of bills in the amount of one hundred and five thousand ninety-one dollars and ninety-eight cents for the week of June 20th, twelve thousand one hundred and sixty-five dollars and seventy-eight cents for the week of June 27th, thirty-three thousand three hundred and seven dollars and sixty-eight cents for the week of July 4th, and fifteen thousand nine hundred and forty dollars and thirty-nine cents for the week of July 11th. Is there any questions on any of those listed bills? Seeing none, I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So moved. We have a developer's fund list of bills in the amount of nine hundred and sixty-one dollars and twenty-five cents for the week of June 20th, three thousand five hundred and twenty-seven dollars and thirty-five cents for the week of June 27th, nine thousand six hundred and eighty dollars and seventy-nine cents for the week of July 4th. Any questions there? Seeing none, I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So moved. We have a capital reserve fund list of bills in the amount of seventeen thousand eight hundred eighty-six dollars for the week of June 20th, one thousand two hundred and eight dollars for the week of June 27th. And any questions there? Seeing none, I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So moved. We have a light fund list of bills in the amount of fourteen thousand two hundred and eighty-five dollars and seventy-two cents for the week of July 11th. Any question there? Seeing none, I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So moved. And we have electronic payment list of bills for the amount of one hundred and nine thousand one hundred and forty-two dollars and forty-eight cents for the pay period of June 15th to June 28th. And we have an amount of ninety-five thousand two hundred and eighty-four dollars and sixty-five cents for the pay period between June 29th and July 12th. I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So moved. That is the treasurer's report for tonight. Moving on to department reports. Chief Savage.
Good evening, sir. The chief's report for June 2025. Of course, I'd like to start out with a few notable arrests that our department's made. A forty-five-year-old Denver man was charged with false reports to law enforcement after an investigation into alleged threats and harassment between coworkers. This occurred at Four Seasons Produce at 400 Wallash Road. A fifty-three-year-old Bucks County man was charged with failure to make required disposition of funds and bad checks. After a lengthy investigation, he charged, excuse me, he is charged with purchasing over eleven thousand dollars of industrial equipment from Schwar Industries on Industrial Road, uh, excuse me, Industrial White. The check was returned for insufficient funds. Numerous attempts were made to settle the issue before the charges were filed. Forty-three-year-old Effort woman was charged with retail theft after officers were called to investigate a shoplifting at Weaver Markets here on North Riden Road. Video surveillance confirmed that the woman exited the store with over two hundred and twenty-nine dollars of the merchandise that she did not pay for. She was cited and released. And a thirty-five-year-old man was taken into custody on an outstanding bench warrant in the first block of Main Street in Denver Borough. He was remanded to Lancaster County Prison. And a thirty-eight-year-old Effort man was taken into custody on an outstanding arrest warrant through the state of New Jersey. He was arrested without incident in the first block of Deanne Circle here in the township. He was remanded to Lancaster County Prison to await extradition. We conducted the two, excuse me, one week-long speed study in Denver Borough in the 700 block of Main Street. And we conducted another week-long speed study here in the township in the 500 block of West Swartsville Road. The average speed recorded was forty-three point six miles per hour. The highest speed recorded was seventy-nine miles an hour, and that was between hours of 1:00 and 2:00 a.m. The posted speed limit there, of course, is forty miles an hour. During the month of June, we conducted two speed enforcement details in Denver Borough. The first one was in the 200 block of East Lancaster Avenue. Second one was in the 700 block of Moore Sixth Street. Total of thirty citations were issued during those, between those two details. We also conducted a speed enforcement detail in the 400 block of Hawnstown Road. It seems to be a troubled area, a troubled area for us as far as speed enforcement, this, people just fly through there. Officers issued thirteen citations for speeding violations and arrested one driver for DUI. The highest speed recorded during that detail was sixty-one miles an hour, and this is a thirty-five mile per hour zone. We conducted another speed enforcement detail in the 1100 block of West Swartsville Road here in the township. Fourteen citations were issued for speeding violations. The highest speed recorded was sixty-two, and that's a thirty-five mile per hour zone. Sergeant Weaver and Officer Stoffer completed a week-long use-of-force instructor training. This training is required by the Pennsylvania Municipal Police Officers Education and Training Commission. This is essential for the officers to maintain their instructor certification. Five of our officers attended the Pennsylvania DUI Association's sobriety checkpoint training. This training is required if an officer participates in any countywide sobriety checkpoint. A lot of times, some larger departments, say Manheim Township, for instance, they would be conducting, along with the district attorney's office, they would be conducting a DUI checkpoint. They ask for volunteers. We have an officer that would normally go up and volunteer. It could be in any capacity, but now the state's requiring that if you're on scene at the checkpoint, the DUI checkpoint, you have to have this training. So five of the officers have received that training. And on June 17th, Officer Johnson and Officer King were recognized by the Lancaster County District Attorney's Office and the DUI Council of Lancaster County for their dedication in DUI enforcement. Both officers received the Lancaster County DUI Top Gun Award. Officers responded to a total of five hundred and twelve calls for service here in the township and one hundred and twenty-four calls for service in Denver Borough. And that concludes our report.
Okay. Thank you, sir. And it's National Night Out coming up next month, I guess?
National Night Out is coming up the first Tuesday in August. I believe it's August 5th. This year, it's going to be held in Denver Borough, the Denver Memorial Park. I think through some discussion, it was decided that we're gonna, we're gonna go back and forth between East Kukaliko and Denver. And that, that way, we maybe spread the word a little bit and hopefully open it up to maybe some community members that have been missing out.
Is this part of their, they're having some kind of centennial celebration or something? I didn't know if it was part of that.
It's not part of it. Is this a coincidence that this was our first year branching out from, and it's nothing, nothing that the Rehymstown Park has done. I mean, they've always done a fabulous job of allowing us to hold it there. We certainly plan to hold it there every year. It's not a reflection of anything with Rehymstown. It was just a kind of hard decision to maybe branch out a little bit.
Everything's coming together for it.
It is.
It's going to be a sunny, wonderful evening.
I hope so. I hope so.
Yes, you all do.
Thank you, thank you, sir.
Okay, and finance, building zoning, that's, report is all in the package out there this evening. New business, color repair. Rich, do you have something there for us on that?
I do. With one particular range of workmen, other than any who had to manage three of our farmers in Woodland Drive and all this, Landis Road.
South Ridge.
South Ridge, yeah, you're right. And so we contacted our bridge engineer, the two, and they're going to file emergency permits for the states, since both of them have running orders for them, so that we can move ahead with preparing them under the emergency provisions of the DHL.
Yeah, so I guess excess water, storm, storm damage, piping, variety of reasons why some of that happened, I guess.
Yes.
Yes. And we'll have more on that in subsequent meetings, I guess.
Yes.
Okay. You mean, Dan, new business?
Do not.
Maybe, right. Old business, we have an update on 2025 river project, Rich.
River project, moving along. We have residents out, we're notified that there was any preparing in this medical subdivision. Going out and marking curbs, some of the residents have required repairs. Hope that those completed early September, and then we'll move into the paving of that.
Yes, there have been feedback from many residents in there, but up the curbs down.
I've talked to a lot of them. And we're probably working with them a little bit, maybe some to see if a spot where there is needed or section needs to be replaced, and so we'll be working back and forth with that.
Okay. All right. Got any head there on old business, Dan?
So just to clarify my curbs, so we're just, the vertical cracks, we're just going to repair or seal? And then we really pared down the thousands of feet to somewhere around, how many?
Three hundred?
Three hundred for the residents?
For the residents, four hundred for the township. For township's fixed issues that were caused by the river. And we did three. Really just looking for displaced or something for the sidewalk.
Okay. Because it wasn't constructed right in the first place in some of those areas or...
Or it just settled over the, since nineteen eighty when they put it in. It's had a good look.
Okay. And today's list of bills, it didn't show up in tonight's list, it'll be in the next meeting, but we're entering another year of our FS4 program where we have our three farmers that are enrolled in it, and they've successfully, successfully met the requirements of the program again. This has been something innovative that former staff and has been involved in creating and saving us quite a bit of funds to meet our MS4 state requirements. So, just an update on that. In our Woody Waste Pile, somebody decided to dump some treated lumber. You know, it was just a matter of time, I guess, for something like that to happen, but we'll be, I guess, Public Works will be handling that and getting that out of the pile of brush. So, other than that, I guess, no state?
No, sir.
Okay. We will move on to public comment. Five minutes per person limit for none of ten of the agents.
Nelson Bilgen.
I'm sorry, you're about to say that?
I.L.G.N. Bilgen. I want to start off by complimenting the new zoning officer. I'm president of the HOA equivalent. We have a resident that was not compliant with taking care of grass and so forth, and last year I reached out to zoning and there was no follow-up. This year, boom, quick results, so I compliment him for that. Reason I wanted to make some comments is that I'm somewhat distressed that there's a lawsuit going on against supervisors, and it's in federal court. So, it's caused me to think about different things. I know you can't respond, I asked him for a response, but as I was just reading through it in several papers, and even made papers in the Philadelphia area, so that doesn't cast a good label on East Kukaliko Township and named people in this court. It is going to be federal, so that ratches things up a little bit. Things that come to mind to me is who pays your defense? Do taxpayers pay that, or is that Wamby Company, or how's that handled? I'm not sure. There were comments made in the lawsuit talking about financial improprieties at both the Rehymstown Fire Company and Anulns. Now, that's going to be in discovery, so there's going to be people reaching, you know, getting more information about that. I would think now would be a good time maybe to slow down on trying to force Stevens to become part of the three fire company merger. Be interesting to see how this all pans out. Several other things came to mind, but the one thing that does come to mind as I think about this... as I think about this and read through it and talk to some of my neighbors and so forth, if the trial results don't come out in favor of East Calico, I would think that means we have lost confidence in the people that are being named in suit. And I would wonder if, at that point, would resignations follow? So, and I guess Tommy Ryan's named into it as well, so it's going to bring a lot of people back. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? How are you, sir?
Keep dragging you back into the building. RC Carrasco. Just a simple question, because actually you kind of hit on it. No, it's a very simple question. Have we notified our insurance carrier?
Yes. Insurance carrier's been notified and coverage council has been appointed in Siena Boulevard for advocacy.
And lead counsel?
Yes, and I'm going to forget who it was, but somebody has been named from that firm.
They do have lead counsel, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Okay. Seeing none. A, our next meeting scheduled for Thursday, August seventh, seven o'clock here at the Township Building. So that being said, I make a motion to adjourn. Second. Motion in second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So moved. Thank you for coming out.